Chair.
Please show me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Please hold our reform. Colored our bow, face. Colored our full march. Colored our poll. Colored our business, partying to a procedure.
All right, so I'll call the meeting to order, and first would like to thank Scout Troop 12 for joining us this evening, presenting the colors and leading us in the pledge. It is always a thrill and an honor to have members of our public come to this meeting and share kind of your gift with us. So I appreciate it. You guys certainly don't have to hang out for the whole meeting at all. So if at any point you need to leave, go ahead, we won't be offended. Okay? Thank you. All right, can we start with the roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Thanks. Okay, moving on to item four on the agenda this evening is public participation. This is the moment when any member of the public can address the board on any topic. Since we are on Zoom, if there's anybody, I see we have 11 participants, it's probably all us. If there's somebody remote, Shar or Judy, that wishes to make public comment, now would be your time. And then if there's anybody in the house tonight that has public comment on any item that's on or not on the agendas, now would be your time to come up to the podium and be heard. All right, is there anybody that submitted written comment?
We did not receive any written comment or voicemails.
And I think this will likely be the last meeting that we announced that we're doing the, you know, due to the governor's COVID thing. I think we'll continue, if it's all right with the board, to have Zoom available for folks to view the meeting, that kind of thing. Or if we have applicants that are coming here, they can present this way if they don't want to drive from, let's say, Springfield. But at this point, I think we can abandon the emergency declaration stuff. So, all right, I'll read the items. Since there's nobody on public comment, I'll go into consent, and I'll read the items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of January 24th, the building report for January of 2022, accounts payable through February 10th of 2022, accounts payable through February 24th, accounts receivable report for January of 2022, water production report for January, and the rep feast report for December of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, and that carries six zero. Thank you. Moving into items for separate action this evening, item A is an IGA with Kendall County and the village for intersection improvements at Dixon Road, Cannonball Trail, and Galena Road. And Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. As you stated, the infrastructure or the intersection improvements, as you highlighted, are the focus of this IGA with the Village of Montgomery and Kendall County. The current schedule for this project would be design in fiscal year '23 and construction in the fiscal year '25. These funds are appropriated in the future budget in the, under the IRP at this time. If there's any questions regarding the improvements, I'm happy to go over those at this time.
I did have a question. The budget that's in here, is that the construction cost?
That's the total, construction without, I'm sorry, design and construction, and it excludes any land acquisition.
Got it. And this, I remember a decade or so ago, we got a contribution from the builder that was kind of earmarked for this, but I think that has since been... Paying...
Yeah, no, I think it should be...
Okay. Got it. Okay. Those are my questions. Anybody?
There's the land cost being unknown, there's truly no estimation of what the village might potentially be on the, on the line for in the future?
I think it still has to be identified via number of parcels that need to be acquired at this time. So I'm not sure that we have an appropriate dollar amount for that unless Engineer Wallers has more information.
Yeah, just to respond, part of the issue is, you know, how much right-of-way, how much land is needed, and the preliminary engineering is going to, from the county will tell us that. And then once we know what parcel sizes we need to acquire, then we can give you an estimate.
Is this projected to be a roundabout?
No, this is a conventional intersection.
Signalized, too.
Signalized conventional intersection, yeah.
Okay. All right, if there are no other comments, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item B this evening is reduction, rejection of bids for condition assessment of the water distribution system valves. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. So as you stated, the rejection of bid basically comes on the heels of staff discovering that this work was identified in the RFP as prevailing wage work, when in fact, we've come to the determination after the fact that this work can be excluded from the prevailing wage act. Therefore, we are rejecting this bid or asking the board to reject this bid tonight. Currently, this project is scheduled for a three-year phase project, was supposed to start in the current fiscal year, and at this point in time, we'd be looking to project that out, starting next year as phase one, and then the following two years, in the following fiscal year. So that is the current plan. That is mostly just due to timing in which this RFP went out.
When you say next year, you mean next fiscal year, starting May 1?
Correct, yep.
Okay. All right, any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, that carries six zero. Thank you. Item C for separate action is final design services for the Montgomery Park improvements. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. So Greg Sagan with Signature Designs met with the village board at the 24th meeting and presented the improvements for Montgomery Park. At that meeting, it was direction of the board for staff to move forward into the final design and proposing construction prior to the targeted date of Montgomery Fest this year. So with that, it's extremely important for us to present this item to the board tonight with hopefully approval, so that we can move into the next phases of the project that will come from the final design. The total estimate is $60,450, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the site.
So the one question I have is, I know that meetings outside of this scope, you know, would be billed at the hourly rate. Can you cover that? If we, if we vote to approve this, can you just pay that? Or do we need to approve this with some sort of an upper limit?
I would, I would imagine it would act as similar to like a change order where we, they would have to get, in fact, I believe it's described in the contract that way, that the village would have to authorize prior to any of that work taking place.
Yeah, but is that village staff or the village board? I guess what I'm trying to avoid is, I foresee there being, yeah, and, and it, we're going to be kind of heavy on meetings, especially when it comes to veterans, meetings and the stakeholders and all that. I just don't want staff to have to come back for a thousand dollar change order. So if we're allowed to do it, that's great. If not, do we need to approve it up to a maximum?
So I, this is not a contract I believe I've reviewed prior to this evening, so I'm not sure what the terms are, but I would put whatever in your motion to allow for that, and then we can check the language and make sure that there's nothing that would conflict with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Do you have anything? All right. Questions? Have you used all mine for the evening?
I, I want to thank staff for sharing the information, and I believe it was the vendor for locations. To, it was helpful to kind of put your mind at ease a little bit and go take a look at what they're going to look like.
Yeah. Okay.
Would you like a motion?
I'd love one.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. All right, I'll go into item D. It's ordinance 1953 declaring surplus property. I can't imagine, staff has a lengthy report on this. Do you have anything additional to add? Or if not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Not to run through it, but we've done a bunch of those before, so. Is there a motion in a second? Any questions for staff or comments? All right, go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item E is award of a contract to Builders Paving LLC in the amount of $2.462 million for the 2022 infrastructure roadway program. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. The IRP bids, as you can see, did come in favorable this year. A lot of that is attributed to the fact of the hard work of engineering enterprises and staff working to get this project out on a regular basis early in the season to get advantageous bids. Bids were received on February 18th. As you mentioned, the bid came in at $2,462, which is roughly about 8.5% under the engineer's estimate at $2,677,679. Sorry. So the areas identified in this year's plan have been presented to the board previously. If there's more information that's needed, I can present that at a later date. Otherwise, staff is recommending approval of this contract. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anything?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Colerole?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thanks, Mark. All right, item F this evening is Resolution 2022-002, accepting drainage easement. This is the Frelk offsite easement for the Village of Montgomery.
Yes.
Go ahead.
It's been a long-term goal for the village to provide an outlet for that detention basin on the Frelk property that's at the east end of Rochester Drive. Additionally, we've been working with the county and the township to help them address drainage issues out in the Johnston and Lindenwood subdivisions, which are incorporated in the county. This 20-foot drainage easement on Johnston Drive lot will allow for a 12-inch storm sewer to be constructed from the existing storm sewer that's on Johnston Drive to connect to the Frelk property detention basin. It'll provide an outlet to draw down the water in the basin, as well as help drain a depressional area in the rear yard of the lots on Johnston Drive. And that Johnston Drive owner has been, that's granting us the easement, will be allowed to provide a connection to that storm sewer to, to make drainage improvements in the future. So just looking for acceptance of the easement, and we'll get it recorded.
Did we pay for this? Do we have to pay for the easement?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I think it was granted without charge.
Okay.
The funds for the project, if you might recall, were some fee and lieu monies that we collected for the storm sewer sys, or the, for the stormwater ordinance from projects within the watershed. And then also a contribution from the gas and wash site to provide the funds for the sewer, so.
And are they the ones doing that work, the detention work out there now, or?
They're expanding the basin in accordance with the agreement the village has. They're paying the village, you know, for that right.
Yep. Okay.
Second. Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Six zero, thank you. All right, item G this evening is Resolution 2022-003, accepting water and stormwater management easements and right-of-way along the baseline road. This is for Central State's bus for the Village of Montgomery. Director App?
Yes. In order to complete the Central State's bus development, the water main had to be extended from Boar Avenue through the property and loop back to the water main on a baseline to provide water and fire services for the building. These utilities are required to be located in a village utility easement, giving the village rights and access to the water lines. Additionally, there's a stormwater management easement over the detention basin that's also required. And also, we've got the right-of-way, so in keeping with our policy for right-of-way dedication for properties where there's no formal right-of-way has been dedicated. This plat includes 40 feet of right-of-way along the baseline road frontage.
Cool.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you. Item H this evening is recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, PZC 2021-021, a variance request for the Montgomery Business Center, proposed lots eight and nine. And then the enacting ordinance is action item I for this evening. Go ahead.
Yes, the petitioners, Finch and Berry Properties, are proposing to build two new industrial buildings on proposed lots eight and nine in the Montgomery Business Center that's located at the northeast corner of Alcut and Commerce Drive. The new buildings are going to be on that southern, that southern portion, and both of them will be facing to the north. That means their principal entrances are not located facing a street in a front or corner side yard. Therefore, they required a variance for that. Additionally, they are looking for variances for illumination standards because the lots will be accessed off of a common access drive coming off of Commerce, and then another shared access drive that will come between the two lots to access the buildings. Those access drives are straddling property lines, therefore, the illumination levels exceed the maximum 1.0-foot candles, so they're asking for some relief in that. Additionally, our code does have a standard size for truck parking spaces, for trailer parking spaces, I should say. And so they're looking for a reduction of that. Our code requires 12-foot by 60-foot, and they are requesting 10 by 50, so they're requesting some relief for that. The Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing this month and recommended approval subject to five conditions, which are outlined in the ordinance. We are requesting waiver of first reading for the ordinance since the February 14th meeting was canceled, so we can keep the project on track.
Good. Thank you. Questions for staff? Is there a user for these, or is this spec?
Not at this time. They are speculative.
Okay. Any comments? Or a motion?
So moved.
All right, go ahead, take the roll. And this is for item H, the recommendation.
Yeah. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yeah.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries six zero. Item I, waiver first, passage in the second. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Colerole?
Trustee Marisak. Trustee, sorry, Trustee Youngerman.
She, she's given a look like she didn't hear which one of you.
It sounded like you both said it at the same time.
He motioned, I second.
I wasn't sure who said it first.
As long as you admit I'm better looking, we're fine.
We're all good.
All right, Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. Item J this evening is award of a contract to All Service Contract Incorporated, the amount of $78,332.65 for Wells Number 14 and 15 Water Treatment Plant, Cat Eye and Exchange Media Replacement. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody. So the board may recall that staff brought a similar item related to this in front of you for approval for the purchase of the media. This is the labor portion that coincides with that. The board did approve the purchase of that media, and we have executed that contract and have those, the media available at this time. So again, this was the labor portion that coincides with that, in which we would be looking to move forward with as far as replacement goes of the media in three vessels located at the well 14, 15 treatment facility. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
All right, that carries six zero. Thank you. Item K is advanced metering infrastructure for water meter data collection. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brody.
That's not even a sentence. That's just a bunch of...
I'm sorry?
Nothing. Go ahead.
Thank you. The, so this is another item that has been discussed quite, quite a bit over the past few years with the village board, and we're kind of finally reaching our plateau, at least in implementing the AMI system, which will allow the village to read the fixed-point units in which we are installing over the course of the next few years throughout the village, be able to read those remotely here at Village Hall. This coincides with the village's meter replacement program, which is scheduled to take place over the next four years. We have roughly about 3,000 endpoints in place currently, in which we have hit that point where it's financially supportive for the village to move forward with the fixed-based network system, AMI system. You'll see that there are capital costs included as part of this to the tune of $140,800. And then there's also annual costs, which are attributed for in the FY '23 fiscal year. So again, this has kind of been a long time coming, moving in the direction in which the village board has pushed staff to do, and we look forward to being able to implement this new system. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
In the, in the annual costs, you've got internet access. How is that not already covered by the village's current data, data plan?
The internet access would be for the site. There's no internet access currently at the well sites, or the, I'm sorry, the water towers where it's going to take place, so it's for the internet to take place at those locations.
Thank you. Get motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. All right, item L this evening is professional advisory services for enterprise resource planning, assessment, and selection. Director Maureen Warren?
Thank you, President Brody. This is something that village staff and the board has also been discussing for several years. And in addition, our financial software provider has told us that they will stop supporting our current version in the next couple of years. Accordingly, we have requested a proposal from Plant Moran for ERP assessment and selection, essentially its software across all departments versus the individual software packages that we have right now. The services would include Phase One and Phase Two, which is needs assessment, requirements gathering, and RFP development. Once the RFP is sent out, then Plant Moran would help us review the proposals, select the vendor, and negotiate a contract with said vendor. We've included $800,000 in the fiscal year '23 budget for the purchase and implementation of the new software package. Staff would recommend approval of the proposal, not to exceed $55,370. If the board has any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Hi, I have a question, if I may. The, the previous software that we had, how, how old was it?
So it depends on the individual packages, but the financial software was purchased in 2003. So it's lasted 20 years.
Okay.
We did look into updating that software, and the pricing of that was similar to what it will most likely be for a combined package, so.
Where I'm headed with this is the software that we're, you're proposing, we, we get now, is viable for, they're not going to somehow stop, stop supporting their software in the next five, 10 years. This is going to last us for a while?
Most of the software packages now are based on GIS.
I have no idea what that is, but okay.
Geographical information systems.
Thank you. Geographical information systems, where someone can go in and click on their property and have permits, water bill, et cetera, come up. And so the software will be internet-based. It's not going to be premise-based, so it should...
So as we, as we spend the money on the software, it, it also provides more flexibility for the residents to get in, and, and it's more usable, more user-friendly?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and also, I, I remember nine or 10 years ago, when I first started doing this, is I had somebody on staff tell me that all of our software doesn't communicate cross-departments. And so this would finally take us into the 21st century. I can't believe it's 2022, and we're doing something like this, but I think that'd be a tremendous benefit to staff. I mean, imagine police, you know, community development, finance, water billing, everything together in one system would be great.
I remember that meeting, and I remember sitting here with my mouth hanging open and saying, "What? You don't know what she's doing, and she doesn't know what you're doing, and you don't talk, and you literally had to walk back and forth from desk to desk to try to communicate." So again, it's been a long time coming, and it's not a, at a small price either. But again, if you were replacing four different departments' software packages, this number's not out of reach.
We're, we're not going into the 21st century. We're getting into the 20th century. We haven't reached 21st century yet. We're working on it.
We're getting it. So again, I'm glad to see that we're moving in the right direction and going to be able to open these lines of communication and be able to, again, view everything as a whole. Because I can remember talk about spreadsheets by address and staff having to populate them in order to have some kind of a uniform process, and it was just cumbersome, so.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Motion to approve?
It sounded almost like a motion, so I'll, I'll...
Second. Can I have another question before we?
Oh, I defer to my friend, Mr. Baumann.
Thank you, thank you. I, I gather that hiring a firm like Plant Moran to do this is a standard, standard operating procedure. I mean, $55,000 compared to the price of the software isn't, isn't huge, but it's a lot to hire a consultant to come in and help to find the software package. Is that normal, or are there not providers, vendors based on size, municipalities, and departments that there are certain software programs that are best suited for a community based on, on our size without having to spend $55,000 to have someone find that for us?
This is a standard procedure. You can try to put together an RFP and do a selection on your own. It is... on your own. It is very difficult in terms of staffing, that we don't have the staff available to be able to put that together and evaluate everything. So it is standard operating procedure that this would go out. This particular company is actually, it is not associated with any particular software vendor. And so when they look at, they get nothing from the vendors. Basically, they'll come out, the interview staff, as to what we're looking for, our needs and our wants. And then, once they do that, that's when they put together the RFP. And then, as stated before, they'll help us through the, the selection of the particular software and negotiation of the final contract with the, with the provider. So...
So I think as much as the staff time too, you're looking at the expertise, the familiarity they will have with the various packages out there, that they will probably, you know, have some idea when they come in, like, well, this one might not be right for you because of this, that, where, you know, they will get more, more knowledge of this than we will, I think, which will be beneficial to us.
I would assume that they're also knowledgeable in, I mean, being able to integrate our information into one of these. It's not just a plug and play. You've got to, this is, we have four different systems, they're going to have to talk, and they're going to all have to talk to the same system, so that they'll be able to help identify that integration and spearhead some of those problems that we might be able to avoid.
The integration of the various software package, I mean, that will be part of the contract, that we need to get the information we currently have in different systems into the new system, so that they're familiar with that as well.
Perfect. I think Teresa has her hand up.
Apparently, I'm just saying hi. I don't know how that happened.
It does it automatically if you raise your hand. Yeah.
Timeline on this? Justin from Implementation.
What's that?
Timeline.
We're looking at approximately a year. That includes the, from them coming out to talk to us, to sending out the RFP, to selecting the particular vendor. We'll have to have both systems running side by side for at least one to two months, if not longer. So we are hoping to have it finished by the end of fiscal year twenty-three.
Good. Thank you. And I'm hoping as a board at that time, we're looking at bringing IT in-house and adding a staff position or two in this particular realm.
I was going to follow up with that. If, with, with the software this, this big, I think it kind of goes further into another conversation, where would this type of program software require a dedicated director of IT to really implement, facilitate, and run, and operate? And if we had that position now, would that have saved us the consultant fee, or would that still have been required?
I don't think it would have saved us the consultant fee, but it would be someone who I think would know and help in that selection of that system. That data migration by itself is going to be a tremendous undertaking. The, the proposal before us shows that they're putting a half to a point seven FTE full-time equivalent on this project for the duration. So the, the IT need is there. You know, I've, I've ad nauseam with this board on my, my feelings on that. It's, it's the future. We're not going to, we're going to get more, not less.
All right. I think there was a motion.
There was a motion.
By Marisak, a second by Youngerman.
That's a long time ago.
Any further conversation? All right, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The last item for separate action this evening is M, award of contracts for the new Public Works facility. This has bid release number three. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Rowley. As the village board is aware, construction of the new Public Works facility is underway. Just to give a quick recap, the village board has already approved contracts, so I did hand out an updated sheet there that has the highlighted items that have already been, contracts that have been awarded. Those are for precast wall panels, precast plank, structural steel, earthwork, site utilities, roofing materials, and installation. Again, those are highlighted on that sheet. The remaining trades for the project were the subject to bid release number three. Those bids were opened on February tenth at two-thirty at Village Hall. Total of eighty-five bids were submitted and opened for the variety of bid packages that were included in that bid release. After revealing and compiling the data, Camozzi Construction identified that bids were more than the estimated amount established in the preliminary budget number two that Camozzi established in February of twenty-one. Therefore, Camozzi, along with village staff, members of Williams Architects, IMEg Engineering, started to work on valued enhancement to reduce costs. The valued enhancement items are listed as well in the packet. Many of these items have already been reviewed and accepted by the village. There are some of those that are lingering and need confirmation from the engineering company to make sure that we can move forward with those valued enhancement items. At this time, staff is recommending the approval for Camozzi to move forward with the low bid contractors, as shown on that sheet that I had handed out. Todd Perron from Camozzi Construction, the village's construction manager, is also here tonight. As I would anticipate, the board may have some questions regarding this item.
Thank you. Questions?
I guess, in general, how do we get this thing back within budget?
So the, through the process of the valued engineering, we were able to find some significant savings due, again, to the hard work of, a lot of it to Camozzi for going in and looking at multiple different things and working with staff to reduce those costs. Essentially, we have taken the excessive costs over the budget and almost cut that by just over fifty percent to bring us back in line. We are not back under the budgeted amount, but we are as close to it as we can get and still end with this project with a building that's functional and will work for Public Works.
I remember the meeting a year or so ago, and I'm, you know, I have a landscaping background, so I'm looking at that. On the VE, it says eliminate landscaping up to budget. And I, when I looked at the budget last year, I said it was too low. But throughout the design process, and I, I can't remember if I ever saw the landscape drawings for the thing or not, why did we design beyond our landscape budget to start with?
So some of that is established in the fact that we can still achieve that plan over the course of phasing. So there's the possibility that we can implement the, the plan for the landscaping over multiple years. Right now, we're just moving forward with basically the base bid up to that budgeted amount, as you suggested. But that way, the design is established, and we have something to build off of in the future years.
Does it make sense at all to do, to do the contracts that we feel that we absolutely need right now, and the others send back out for bid?
That's a question that I would probably refer to Todd on, his expertise. How you doing, Todd?
To answer your question, I don't think there are many bid packages that would grant us the opportunity to get lower prices at this time. Probably, if we could push them off to two or three years, when this market becomes normal, hopefully, it does come, become normal again someday. But I don't think, at this point, you're going to reap a lot of reward from that. We don't see anything changing in pricing in the next twelve months, for sure.
And just if I could add one thing, we had a meeting this past week to talk to specifically the mechanical contractors, and one of the statements that was made was that they bid this pretty aggressively when it comes to labor, because of the timing of the project fits very well with some of the gaps in some of their work. So again, most of the excessive costs, if not all, are directly related to product inavailability and product escalation, and not necessarily any type of labor shortage or labor increases.
You know, and I'll just jump in. I do appreciate staff and Camozzi working through those bids and trying to find areas where we can cut costs that, without cannibalizing the structure and the Public Works facility. Somebody can chime in, but the last time we built a Public Works facility was?
Nineteen ninety-nine was the addition on, for the water treat, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety was the addition. The original structure was built in nineteen seventy-four.
Okay. And so I, it's probably not the best time for us to be pulling the trigger on a Public Works facility, but that decision has long since passed, right? In the last eighteen months, we've seen large swings in basically every type of commodity that would go into the structure. Bottom line is, we need the structure. We need somewhere for our Public Works folks to be. And so it's important, and I do want to thank all of you for finding ways to cut when we can. I think that'll get us close to the budget amount, like we were talking about beforehand. I think it's still going to be more than what we budgeted. Fortunately, we're in a, we're in a solid financial position where we can stomach that. This isn't like when we built this Village Hall or, or the police station, where sticking to a hard budget was, was possible, honestly. So I do appreciate you guys' work on this, getting us as close as we can. What I fear, and what I, I know that you guys are focused on, is cutting so much that we lose functionality in the building, where we have to go back in and re-engineer things later. I, I am not for that one bit. But I think if you were to phase in landscaping or certain things like that over the course of a decade, you know, I think we can figure that out. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's been something that's been critical in our meetings, is to make sure that we don't restrict ourselves for future, anything that we're removing now as a valued enhancement, that we can't add back at a minimal cost later on.
What is our anticipated completion date now?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Anticipated completion date?
Leave it as March first of two thousand and twenty-three.
This would be the GMP, correct?
Yes.
Is that what we're hoping to arrive at?
Yes.
So we won't have change orders coming back where they say, "Well, no, this was, this was, we didn't understand the documents because we're going to hold them till." Is that, that's correct?
That is correct.
For the non-contractors in the room, can you define GMP?
GMP stands for guaranteed maximum price. I wasn't sure if he was asking me or you.
I'm always asking him.
He is absolutely correct, though.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion from anybody? So this is the last of the bid packages on this, correct?
There are two bid packages in which we did not receive any bids. One was an elevator. Elevator contractors are very finicky. If you can't, can't lead the horse to the trough, you kind of, some kind, you know, deal with that. But, and also miscellaneous metals, we did not receive a bid. So we're going to go out for rebidding those two, those two trade packages.
And what's the budget in total for both of those, roughly?
The, the elevator is, I think, budgeted now at one hundred and thirty thousand, which we actually did receive a bid for it at our office. Of course, it didn't do any good. And then the miscellaneous steel, I believe, is one hundred and fifteen thousand?
One eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven. I can see it on there now.
Okay.
Okay. So we're looking at just over three total.
Yeah.
So what happens, you go back out to bid, and there is still not an elevator contractor who's interested?
Oh, I'll make sure.
Is it treble shape, or what do we, what do we do?
We're going to make sure this time that...
Somebody?
Somebody, if I have to pick them up and bring them here myself, I will do that.
All right. If there's nothing else, call roll, please.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman? Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
That was five definitive yeses and one soft yes. And that carries six zero. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
All right. Our only item for discussion this evening is a big one. It's fiscal year twenty-twenty-three general fund budget. Director Van Voren has a PowerPoint for us and a binder of information. And I'm assuming tonight, or after tonight, the full budget will be posted on the village's website, so that the public can go looking for it. Say that it would.
That.
There you go. Doesn't have to be now, but we'll get, we'll get something up there. I think especially when some folks might not be comfortable coming to Village Hall to, to view one of these, have it up on the website while it's draft. While he's getting that up. There are no executive session tonight. Future meetings, you can see Plan Commission, a village board meeting, basically everything that's approved on our schedule, so I don't have to go over that later. What was that? You're talking about future meetings?
I thought Intergov is canceled in March. Didn't we just have?
Look at that. It is.
It is.
So beautification is canceled in March. I'm glad we covered this, because I would have shown up. All right. So both of those are canceled, beautification and Intergov. You good?
Actually, sorry, one more thing.
Yeah, right? It's an inside job. You're... Are you looking to present it on the Zoom as well?
I was just making sure where my notes were on the screen.
Was showing up on the Zoom?
Yeah, on the Zoom, I see the presentation mode. I see two screens. While they're figuring that out. Not that I'm trying to get out of here in a hurry. I just haven't eaten. Does anybody have anything newer unfinished that we can cover at this point?
I do. I've got something.
Go ahead.
This was last week, two weeks ago. I, I would like to recognize Public Works. We had a, what I would consider a castro, castro...
Catastrophe.
Catastrophe, thank you, on Margaret with a sanitary storm sewer. And just the way everything shook out, Public Works had to bypass pump, and they had to man that pump twenty-four, seven for three days, was it, over the weekend? Five days? And it's my understanding that we had no impact on any residents during that time. So I just would like to recognize Public Works, and specifically Sean Murphy, who was just out there untold hours and did a fantastic job of making it all to come together and making it happen.
Well, it's not like it was exceptional weather either.
No.
It was near-zero temperatures for some of that, so it's a tough job.
Yeah. That's just one of those things that, that happen, and the general public, you know, never knows about it.
Yeah.
Unless somebody brings it up. And I mean, it had the potential of being, being a lot worse.
Some would say catastrophic.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Not the end, though.
I have, thank you. I have one item. March sixth, the police department is, again, this year, participating in polar plunge. So please contact PD if you'd like to support them and donate. The proceeds go to Special Olympics.
Correct?
So I'm sure that there's a link at some point through the website if...
People got an email.
On Facebook? Okay.
Yeah, share it on the Facebook page. So again, it's a great event to, to do, and it's a great cause. And it's kind of fun to, I did it one year, and it's cold. It's real cold. So, but again, try to, if we can get anybody to come out and support them, it would be appreciated.
Yep, absolutely. Anybody else have anything else newer and finished? I know Justin's ready, but we're halfway done. This way, we don't have to come back. Steve, Matt, Teresa? Okay. All right. Thank you for giving us a break so we can cover that stuff.
Sure. Can you still see two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that bother you? Because it's just clicking that display settings right there at the top of that, if you don't want to see that. And then, there you go. Click on it. And then just duplicate slideshow, unless you need to see notes.
I need to see my notes.
All right. So do we then?
So I take it you're not going to be putting in for that IT position when it becomes available?
But for the young folks in the audience, now would be a good time to bolster up on that IT so that when, by the time we pass that in our budget, you guys will be out of college and ready to go.
That's true.
They could probably come down to do it now.
Yeah, probably.
That's true.
No, I just see one. We're good. And see, we did all of this just so that Judy and Shar, actually now it's Sean and Shar, can see it correctly.
All right.
Thanks, Justin. Appreciate it. Wouldn't it be hilarious if it's one slide after all this?
Well, just pass.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry. All right. So the general fund is the basic operating fund of the village. It includes revenues and expenditures of all governmental activities, except those that must be accounted for independently. Fiscal year it has the highest revenues and expenditures of any of our funds. Fiscal year 22 budgeted revenues were 12.2 million compared to projected revenues of 13.4 million. The pie chart shows the percentage of revenues expected to be received from each source in fiscal year 22. The largest of those sources, the state sales tax, was budgeted at $5.1 million and is projected to come in at roughly $5.6 million through April 30th. And then the state income tax was budgeted at 2.2 million and it is projected to come in at $2.7 million through April 30th.
I think we've talked about this before, not to interrupt you, but the internet sales that, that we now receive taxes from has been a huge help for us.
The destination-based sales tax that started January 1st, 2021, has been a very, very
Strong producer.
Strong. Yep. Fiscal year 22 general fund budgeted expenditures were 12.1 million and we're projecting expenditures to be roughly 12.1 million. The pie chart shows the percentage the village expects to spend in fiscal year 22 by department. Fiscal year 23 general fund revenue is budgeted at 13.4 million versus general fund expenditures of 13.2 million, resulting in a net surplus of $237,000. The graph to the right shows, I'm sorry, the pie chart to the right shows the percentage of revenues budgeted from each source in fiscal year 23. Looking at the top three revenues, sales, state sales tax, state income tax and property tax makes up 81.5% of the general fund revenues. The next few slides we'll discuss
I, I hate to do this. Can you go back two slides? I just want to see one more. Okay, so our state sales tax has gone up about 2% over from fiscal year 22 to 23, or 21 to 22? Is that what I'm seeing here?
From 22 to 23.
22 to 23. So we're 41.7 and the other one was 43 something? Okay.
Part of that is looking at some of the other items like licenses and permits. So licenses, excuse me, licenses and permits, like building permits, were higher in fiscal year 22. They're lower in fiscal year 23. So you'll have those slices getting smaller in addition to the state sales tax, the state income tax and property tax getting larger.
It's not necessarily because the state sales tax has grown. It's just a bigger piece of that pie. Okay.
Yep.
But it has grown, right? State sales tax?
Yes, yes. So on this slide so state sales tax is the largest single revenue, not only for the general fund, but also for the village as a whole. The large increase that you see in fiscal year, fiscal year 22, so if you move from fiscal year 21 into fiscal year 22, that's where you see the large bump with the destination-based sales tax where it's coming in roughly half million dollars more than what we budgeted. And then looking at historical growth of sales tax, 2014 through 2022 is approximately 8.9%. However, the village has chosen, chosen to be conservative in estimating the, those revenues for fiscal year 23 by only increasing that, that amount by 5%.
Do you think we're gonna continue to see bumps as the sales tax agreements that we have with some of these retailers expire?
Can you state that again?
Some of our sales tax rebate agreements are set to expire. Can, do you expect to continue to see those bumps in the next coming years because those sales tax rebates are expiring?
So the sales tax rebates are not included as net against this slide. Those are included as an expenditure. But we do expect to see those slowly go down as, as they, various agreements expire. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So the village's second largest general fund revenue source is state shared income tax. Comes from the state of Illinois, also known as the local government, government distributive fund. It's distributed on a per capita basis. So the Illinois Municipal League estimates the amount on a quarterly basis, puts that information out to municipalities. So for fiscal year 22, they're estimating that amount at $134.90 per capita. And then projecting that goes down slightly to 132.30 per capita for fiscal year 23. We are using our new census number of 20,262 residents. So the third largest revenue in the general fund is property tax. What this chart shows is the overlapping tax districts, including two counties, two library districts, two park districts, five school districts and five fire protection districts. This particular chart shows the overlapping districts in the area that makes up the highest assessed value. So each this happens to be in Kane County. The second largest is in Kendall County. So that's why you're seeing just Kane County on this particular slide. You can see the school district by far has the largest percentage. The village is kind of in the middle with 5.2. And the others are listed out there as well.
Now, Justin, just like yours, because that, every, that was for the village? That property tax, that last slide, because it talks about Kane County Forest Preserve, Montgomery Fire Protection. So this isn't indicative, this is A snapshot of somebody that lived in Kane County?
Yes.
So Kendall County and your fire district could be different, so on and so forth throughout the village. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So looking at property taxes a little bit further, the increase in total property tax revenue is limited by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act, otherwise known as the tax cap. The levy cannot exceed the Consumer Price Index plus new growth. So looking at the the pieces of the property tax, the equal, if you take the equalized assessed value and you multiply it by the property tax rate, that then equals the total village property taxes. The increase in property taxes for fiscal year 23 is approximately $68,000. Any questions on revenues before I go to expenditures? Okay. So if you're looking at the graph to the left, it shows how the village plans to spend the limited general fund resources available to the village. Looking at police and public works, those two together account for approximately 71% of total gen, general fund expenditures. Steve, just to your point in regards to the sales tax agreements, those would be included in the community development, the yellow slice of the pie. And then just going into some of the individual items for the general fund that were requested this year. We had personnel requests, four of those. We had two patrol officers requested at $108,000 each, records clerk at $76,000, and a building maintenance technician at $83,000. That includes salary, benefits, equipment. It includes supplies, everything for that individual. That's not solely their salary. So some of the other requests that we had looked at this year and received were an increase to the budget for Montgomery Fest, which is roughly $25,000. An update to the Mill District Plan, which is roughly $50,000. Rerouffing of the existing public works building for approximately $100,000. Painting inside and outside at the police station, $78,000. And then reconfiguration of the records division that will take place over two years. So the amount that's shown here, $60,000. Half of that is in fiscal year 23 and half of that is in fiscal year 24. If there are any questions?
I just have one clarifying point. So the rerouffing of the existing public works building so that the public doesn't think we're putting $100,000 into a building that we're gonna abandon, that, that building is still gonna be in use after the new building is completed and is here for years to come?
That is correct. That all, obviously it's combined public works with the village's central water treatment facility lime softening plant. So that, that building will stay not only for the next eight to 10 years before the village switches water source to the Lake Michigan, but therefore after serving as a way for us to move water from different pressure zones within the distribution system.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify and put it on record. So somebody will call me
Thank you.
And say, really? You're spending $100,000 on a building that you're getting rid of? So I just wanted to be out there. Thank you.
Justin, I don't want to offend you at all, but everybody in the room just left.
Quite literally.
Everybody.
You cleared the room.
Except, except John. John's a staple.
John's still here.
That was, that was, that was on purpose.
Good job. Question for you. The rerouffing of the existing public works facility, is there, I don't want to get into position, in a situation where we're splitting hairs on this, but is that something that the water fund can partially pay for? Or is this strictly a general fund expenditure? Not that it matters to me, just asking.
I think it's a good question. I, I will tell you that from the standpoint of separation, this is the existing, or the, the original public work structure. So again, it doesn't, it's, it's the part, portion of the structure that was originally built in 1974 and not part of the structure that took place in 1990 when
You're splitting it like, like my old house that was on the county line and the bedroom was where we voted. I get it.
Yeah, I think there could be an argument made for that, for sure.
But I know you're not asking for us to do that. So, okay?
Got some other things you can do with money and water.
Yeah, we have millions upon millions of water needs. So, okay?
Is there room to increase that budget based on the conversation we just had on the public works building with materials and possibilities of going over budget in this construction world? Does that need, does that figure, does it sound or should it really be 160,000?
I know that we did do an increase upon our original budget number, but I mean, it definitely won't hurt us to take a look at that again. As, like everything, the market, especially right now as volatile as with roofing, is extremely up and down. So I, I think, you know, the safe bet is that I'm not sure that we're ever gonna get locked in until, until we're at a point where we're ready to pull the trigger. But yeah, I think it definitely, we can definitely take another look at it to make sure.
But I would, I would value, especially in this environment, seeing worst case scenario and coming in $40,000 under budget. You look like, someone looks like a hero.
Sure.
But, but it saves these conversations of, well, hey, this is only supposed to cost X when we know that every two weeks, there's a fluctuation in materials going on and
And to that point, the rerouffing, I know somehow we focused in on this, which is great. The 100,000, like, could that roof make it another year if stuff went out of whack?
It's, it's, it's possible. It's, it's definitely at the end of its lifespan, for sure. But, but it's possible.
Got it.
It was leaking when I retired. Just saying.
Five gallon buckets are pretty cheap.
I don't work cheap anymore. So, sorry.
And I do appreciate Justin putting these in here, and the dollar amounts in here, just so that, you know, I know that each of us has spent some time looking at the budget, but so that it's very open that we're looking to add, you know, four additional full-time staff and then the additional other requests that are currently in the, the draft budget that we have here. Okay. Is that, do you have any more slides?
That's it.
I thought that was a good amount. Anybody have any other questions in relation to
Thirty people that left.
Right. And so anything that he talked about that you would like further clarification on? The one thing that I know, I've talked to you about is I want to see the five-year staffing projections, where we were five or 10 years ago. FTE is kind of out. I know you have that. I'd love to see that. Because I know, and I think the boards agree, that we're understaffed on a bunch of things. Public works, you know, IT, that kind of thing. So I'd love to see that going forward. Any other questions on the general fund tonight? If you have any between now and when are we voting on the full budget? April something?
It would be
Wow.
March.
That's early.
Did you say March 28th?
Yeah, screwing around.
Yeah. So we'll have the Yeah, so we'll have the, um.
You know what?
We'll have the public hearing at the March fourteenth board meeting, um, and then we'll also review, um, the capital items, uh, the water fund, um, some of the other funds at that meeting. And then, um, on March twenty-eighth, uh, it will be on there for, um, the second reading and approval.
Got it. So not to be like the downer or anything, but, um, March twenty-eighth is the week of spring break for us and so we won't be here, just so you guys, I won't be voting for it, so.
You don't vote, I mean.
It's convenient.
Did that look too, too played out? All right, we'll figure that out. All right, if you have anything, get to Justin. I would love to know if any of the board members have questions and they send to you, if you could just reply all to everybody.
Absolutely.
Or in the notes, I'd love to see that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
I forgot during new business, I have one new business.
All right.
And it's just a question for consideration for the board, staff, is to get agendas on Thursday instead of Friday? I, I.
Actually, we, we discussed that this week with our, uh, new executive assistant and that is her plan, is to start putting them out on Thursdays.
Thank you so much, I already like her, she's doing a great job.
It's already in the works for you.
Motion adjourned.
Well, real quick, now I got something. So I thought of this and maybe staff can think about it. We, we had two items on the agenda today to accept an easement, so not where we're giving one up, but where somebody's granting us an easement or granting us right away. Why does the board need to take action on that? Is there something that we can change in our code to where staff can approve that and I can sign it?
There could be situations where the board probably might not want to accept an easement.
But where our staff would and we would overrule them?
Maybe.
I, yeah, that's what I was wondering. All right, we'll think about it.
I think we could put some kind of process, we can brainstorm some kind of process.
Cool. All right, let's adjourn before we come up with anything else.
Is there a second?
Uh, yes.
Heave motion.
I'm, I made the motion, Tom seconded.
Tom seconded.
And had a question. All right, go ahead.
Yes.
Trusty Marisak, yeah. Trusty Betzinger.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
And that carries six zero, we're adjourned. Thank you.